Faculty rooms and board office. According to New Jersey Public Law two thousand one, chapter two twenty six, the smoking of tobacco is strictly prohibited anywhere in public school buildings or anywhere in school grounds, including but not limited to the parking areas, grassy areas, and athletic fields. Violators be subject to fine not to exceed one hundred dollars. Roll call. Claudia?
Yeah.
Patrick? Al?
Here.
Doug?
Here.
Tony?
Here.
Barbara?
Here.
Stephanie?
Here.
Alan?
Here.
Joe?
Here.
Matt? Robert?
Here.
And Carrie?
Here.
Claudia, would you mind reading the mission statement? No? Okay.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
Mission of the Riverdale Regional School District is to provide a safe student-centered environment in which each student is valued and respected, to challenge each student to reach his or her potential, to nurture every student's intellectual, social, physical, and emotional growth, to promote a healthy work ethic, a passion for learning, and respect for oneself and others, to develop responsible citizens for a diverse community and ever-changing world, to continue to involve our community in an active partnership, and to provide all students the opportunity to achieve and exceed the Common Core standards and the New Jersey Core Curriculum Content Standards.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So now at this point, if any, if anybody has any comments on the agenda items only from the public, please come to the microphone, identify yourself, and again note that you will have an opportunity at the end of the, towards the end of the meeting for comments on any other topics that may arise. Seeing as there are none at this point, then we're going to go right into our presentations.
We have two presentations tonight, one's relatively quick.
It is, it is.
But it's the best one because there's money attached to it.
We want to get over here.
We want to get center stage.
We want center stage.
I'd like to introduce Mark Dance, who is a member of the, is it A M?
Oradell Emerson Rotary Club.
Yeah, Oradell Emerson, I was going to say A M.
Well, we meet in the mornings.
Right. Rotary Club, and our advisor Andrea Lauderbach to the, why am I spacing, the Interact Club, which is a, an affiliate, a club that we have that's affiliated with Rotary International. And I think you're here with?
This is Morgan Arnaud, she's our vice president of our club for this year.
Okay, and of course Mr. Renzelli, and I'm going to move over here, and ladies, you come on over here because I think Mr. Dance has something for you.
Well, I do. First of all, I want to thank Andrea and Morgan and all the Interact Club members, they did an outstanding job this year. They raised close to six hundred dollars, that's their portion, and I'm pleased to present you with a check. And that amount, while we're so fast, it's a picture.
Thanks, Mark.
You happy with that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, we wouldn't exist without you.
Our attendance doubled this year. And thank you.
Well, thank you, and thank you for.
It's been postponed a couple of times.
Exactly.
So, thank you. Thank you.
As many of you may or may not know, Rotary is a service organization, they provide opportunities for not only our, our youth to become involved in providing service to the community at large, but they help support a variety of other interests, which include?
We give dictionaries to every fourth grader in two communities, we sponsor college scholarships, we send students on a youth leadership program for a week in the spring. It's all good.
Students here from another country, we host.
We have an exchange student currently.
Yes.
From Brussels.
Yes, and she's a Riverdale student.
That's correct. And?
And a cheerleader.
No, I'm sorry.
And cheerleader, yes, absolutely.
And then in addition to that, we have the Interact Club, which not only has its spaghetti dinner, but you do some other things around here, and if you could just tell everybody briefly, including the big highlights for the spring.
Okay, senior students proms, one of our biggest ones, we host about a hundred and twenty seniors in the spring for a dance, and we transform the cafeteria, we, what did we do this year, lunch, the lunch program. Table to table, we worked with them this year, and we ran into a fundraiser at lunch, and we got some money for some families to get some food and things like that, like a bag of lunch program. Spaghetti dinner, we did the Alzheimer's walk, the blood drive.
We're going to do a food drive.
We're going to do a food drive this spring.
Together.
So we just try to, we reach out with the Oradell Kids Foundation, we help with chestnuts and Oradell, and any, we work with seniors in the community to shovel, anything I can come up with in the community, we try to jump into.
So the food drive will be sometime in April, it'll be in combination of the Rotary Club and the Interact Club, and we're looking forward to it. They send a truck to pick up the food.
Might as well.
Hopefully a big truck.
It is, it is, the Center for Food Action provides a truck. And a driver.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fantastic, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then moving right along, our Board of Education prides itself on doing some research on how to be better board members, and how to continue to help move the district forward. We've been engaged in a process where we've been talking about a general topic of strategic planning, and we had a presentation several months ago by the New Jersey School Boards Association, and now we're having another presentation. Nancy Stern is going to be providing with us a, a discussion, if you will, about a more condensed strategic planning process that the board will then have the opportunity to consider. So with that in mind, I'd like to turn the program over to Nancy Stern, and as she comes up here, Nancy has sat in your seat as board members, and has been a member of the New Jersey School Boards Association, so she comes to us with a.
Watch your foot, watch your foot, watch your foot there.
She comes to us with the wealth, you got it, with a wealth of experience from, if you will, both sides of the table, and will be able to provide us with a little guidance in this process. That's alright, I'll get it, don't worry about it.
Yeah, you have to watch your feet there, it's a tangled web.
Sorry. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for inviting me here, I appreciate it. Patrick took away some of my statement, which was going to be a little bit about my background, and a little bit about Kathy's background. Unfortunately, she's not here this evening, but both of us are former board members. Kathy from Sussex County, I'm from Burton County, I was a board member in Fort Lee, I was also president of Burton County School Boards Association, and I was also, both of us were former New Jersey School Board, and Riverdale happens to be one of the districts that both of us covered, so I spent many an evening right here, talking to all of you or some of you in the past. Kathy and I left New Jersey School Boards, and after requests to some of the districts that we had worked with, they asked us if we could continue to work with them. So we started our own little consulting firm, and we've been doing that for the past five years, and we do strategic planning, which we're going to call community planning, I'm going to say that to you, as well as goal setting, evaluations, and superintendent searches. So, just to give you an idea, and some of that information is in the packet I gave you. First, I want to explain to you the difference between community planning, which is what we call it, and strategic planning, as many of you are used to. First big difference is the timeframe. Strategic planning usually covers five years. Community planning covers three years. And the reason we feel that three years is really appropriate.
I want to throw you off, right, but I can just ask you, so for the benefit of the audience that's not here, if you can present from this direction.
Any place you want.
The camera will be able to pick you up there.
No problem.
So, we always ignore Al anyway, so it's okay.
I'm sorry. I apologize in advance, okay?
That's quite alright, please.
The reason we feel three years is more appropriate is because things happen so fast now in the world of education, and because everything that's going on in Trenton, we feel that three years is really all the amount of time that you can plan. Five years, nobody really knows what's going to happen. The other thing is strategic planning in the formal sense takes about six months to do, and it's an incredible commitment of time on behalf of your stakeholders, as well as your administration, as well as the board members. This is very different. It's a four-hour condensed timeframe, where everybody gets together, and we still do the same things. We still do visioning, we still do the core beliefs, we still do a mission statement, we still do your goal statements, we still do strategies, but it's for a shorter period of time. What we're finding is people don't have six months to donate their time to work on this, whereas for a condensed period of time, people are very interested in doing this, and you find a lot of people do want to participate in this process. So that's one of the advantages. Where does it differ at the time that you finish and you have your strategies and your goal statements? If you're doing strategic planning, it would take about two to three months just to create the action plans. What happens here is when it's all finished, it gets turned over to your superintendent, and he and his administrative team would put together the actual action plans. We think this is beneficial because they really understand the process. They, as opposed to laypeople, really understand what needs to be done, what resources are available, who's available, the amount of time, the amount of money, so we feel it's beneficial to have them do it. The way it works is we usually do this on a Saturday, it can either be in the morning, it can be in the afternoon, the timeframe is up to you. We used to do it in the evening, and we found that people really need to come, be relaxed, not have to rush, you know, looking at their watch, that it's getting to be nine thirty, ten o'clock at night, they want to go home, on the flip side, not sure if they can be here at five thirty to start. So we do it on the weekend. It's four hours, we usually start a half an hour before so everybody can come, we commit to that period of time, so when we tell you it's four hours, we will be done in four hours. And we do the same exercises, as I said. We limit you to forty people, because we think for a period of time, we have found through experience, that that's really a good amount of time to, the amount of people to have there, and it's a wide spectrum of people. Obviously, the board would want to be there, your superintendent, business administrator, probably some of your staff. You also want to have some of your community members. You want your parents there, you would also want to have some of your Rotary Club, your Chamber of Commerce, somebody maybe from the police department, from the fire department. Most importantly, and I'll look at you, you want your students there. When you have a K through twelve or a regional high school, I will tell you without any question, the students are the most to the conversation, because they're the closest to it. And believe it or not, you find out so much from them, because we all work together. The way it works is, let's assume there are forty people, we will break you up into four groups, ten group, ten people per group. You will never be in the same group more than one exercise. We do small group exercises, we do large group exercises, we move you around. The reason we do that is there's an intangible benefit from that. You as board members get to meet some of the community members, the community members may not have had any exposure to the board or to the administration, now they have the advantage of sitting at a table and working with you. Everybody is equal in this process, everyone has an equal say, and everybody's voice is heard. And I think that's what's really important, is that you are gab, the board, if they choose to do some form of strategic planning or community planning, you have made a conscious decision that you now want to include the community, other stakeholders, in the process. The benefit you get from that is they have ownership. It's not something that the board alone or the administration is doing. By engaging other people, there is ownership with this from everybody. You have a buy-in from your community, which is very beneficial. One aspect of this, which I think people don't realize, is that people want to be involved. Like, some districts will say, well, what if I can't get forty people to be there? I don't think anyone's ever had that problem that we've dealt with. People are interested, will the staff come on a Saturday? They want to be a part of planning. Everybody wants to be a part of planning what's going to go on, so I don't think you'll have a problem with that. I will tell you, we will assist you in giving you a list of people or groups of people that we think you would want to invite, we will give you letters so that you can send those out to people, we will work with you in trying to do that. So, we're with you throughout the process. The day that we have the community planning, however, other than asking your superintendent to introduce us, we will then let him sit, he will sit down, and we will take over for the day. We will do the entire, we will facilitate the entire evening's activ, the day's activities, so that you do not have to do anything other than be a participant in that program. When it's all finished, and again, we will do a visioning exercise, we will do a, the goal statements, we will determine the core beliefs, we will even get to the point of doing strategies for your goals. We will then collect everything, we will then put all of the strategies together for you, and then we will turn that over to your superintendent. I'm going to give you, we have just finished doing Glen Rock's renewal, they did an original one, and they asked us to come back and do the renewal, we did the exact same thing for Ridgewood. So I'd like to just show you, so you may want to just pass this around, I'll be careful in this. Exactly what the product looks like. This is another thing which I think is a benefit, having done strategic planning in the true sense of strategic planning, you will get a book that will be this high, it will sit on a superintendent's credenza, and whether they ever look, whether anyone ever looks at it again, other than to dust it off, I'm not sure. This is twenty-some odd pages, it is manageable, it is something that many districts have put on the website, so that your community can then see it, and it's something that you can refer to. One of the benefits of doing some form of community planning is your goal setting, when you do that annually, should come from the goals that you've now set for three years. So you've set the large goals for three years, now your annual goal setting should come directly from that. So that process all gets tied together, and believe it or not, your goal setting is much faster as a result of that happening. The one big question which we would talk to your superintendent about would be, you read the mission statement today. Some districts decide when they do this type of planning, they want to scrap the old mission statement, and they want to start fresh. New slate, you want to start fresh. Others decide they want to take the existing mission statement and then tweak it. That's the one decision that you have to make, because that would change just the way in which we do it. We will do it either way, and we've done it both ways. Some districts want to start from scratch, on the renewals, both Glen Rock and Ridgewood kept it and we tweaked it. But when you're doing it for the first time, it's up to you. Whatever you want to do, we will do, we just decide, you know, get an idea in advance, so we can plan the way you want to go, and the timeframe. I think you can see as these are being passed around, that they're very, even though you have two districts from Burton County, similar in size, K through twelve districts, you'll see how different they are. The one thing we will tell you, goals, you don't come out with ten goals, you normally come out with three to four goals, student achievement will definitely be one of your goals, because we sit here as board members for the purpose of student achievement, that's what we do, that's why we're here. And then from there, it will depend upon what is important to you at this present, at this point in time, and goals change, as you know from your annual goal setting. So you may have three goals that you pick now for your three-year plan, and they may change. You may achieve one, and you may take another one, so it varies. It changes. It's a moving, fluid document. We've put in here some of the districts that we have done this with, just so you know, besides, we've done Glen Rock's price, we've done Ridgewood's price, we also did Oradell's, and Patrick was part of that process at the time. Alan, you were also part, you're not, at Oradell's, you're not? Okay. And then Harrington Park, and we've also done Stillwater. So we've done it, it seems to be something now that people are very interested in doing, because with limited resources, it becomes more and more important to see where you can spend the money and what you can do with your resources. I, the last thing I wanted to tell you is, once it's finished, we will come, once we finish our part, we will come to the board meeting, and we'll present it to all of you. The packet that you see there is what you will all get, we will explain it to you, we'll take you through the whole process, we suggest that those people who have participated in the process be invited back, so now they can see the end result, they can see what, you know, their hard work was for. And then, many of the superintendents will do a one-year repeat of, how are we doing? You know, what are these Ed Koch type of things, like how are we doing on our goals? And you may want to invite those people back again, so that they, again, are part of the process. So they, those stakeholders feel that they have contributed something which is actually being implemented. I think I've covered the basic things, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
What if you don't arrive at consensus? I mean, what deems consensus? You know, in a group of forty people, you know, there can be a lot of disparate vision. So are you taking all the information and synthesizing it into that, or, like, I don't see how in four hours you could necessarily come to consensus.
I think the consensus issue really comes up with your mission statement. And if you can ask me, are all four people, are all forty people going to be really happy with every word in the mission statement? I would probably tell you not every person, but I think everyone, we ask, can everyone live with this mission statement? And that's the longest part of the process, because absolutely, people go back and forth. The tweaking of one word can take a half an hour. People, and I understand that, this is your goal, this is your mission statement. I will tell you that we have never had, I can't tell you everyone has been one hundred and ten percent happy, but I will tell you, we've never had a problem where people haven't said, I can go along with that, would have liked to change this one word, but okay, I can still agree to that. As far as the visioning and the core beliefs, at every step that we go, we ask everyone, can you live with this? So if Group A gives us their beliefs, we ask the other three groups, are you okay with this? And to be honest with you, they, like I said, they may not like every single word, but the answer is yes. We have not had that situation, and the mission statement is the one that takes the longest time, and we plan accordingly with that, we are, we get, we're prepared for that to
We all know the world of education, we have constant change, but it seems lately, two things come to mind with big changes coming about in the evaluation processes and assessments. You touched upon it a little while ago, but putting in the abbreviate, if I'm using the correct word, program into place, with everything going on, would that or would not put an undue strain on our administration and staff to move forward with the whole program with everything going on in the educational world?
That's a very fair question. I don't think so, because what you're doing, the same exact steps are being done, whether it's done in a longer period of time or a shorter period of time. And when I say shorter, it's only the time that we're all getting together that's condensed. It doesn't mean that it's going to take a shorter amount of time for them to do goal statements and to put together action plans, but it's going to be faster, because they're the experts in what they're doing. They don't have laypeople that are going to be assisting them in doing that, they know what the resources are, they know what the steps are, they know what's coming down the pipe from Trenton, whereas we may not. So, I don't think that becomes a problem, they're also very experienced with this, it's not something that they would not be handling. Probably, some of the goal areas that people are going to come up with are things that you've already discussed. Nobody's reinventing the wheel, and I'll, I'll use the example, because ironically, it's true for both Glen Rock and for Ridgewood, they're both discussing full day kindergarten. Okay, it was discussed before community planning, it was discussed during community planning, and then now they're both addressing it. So, these are some of the things, you're not going to find new things, I'm sure your superintendent and business administrator have seen most of it, but there may be a different spin to it, maybe a different way of looking at it. Somebody who's not sitting at this table may come up with an idea that may be, you know what, this is a way to go, this is something else to consider, and I think you get that from the conversation that you're having, sitting around the room for the four hours. Welcome.
When putting together the forty-person group, do you cut it off at forty, or is more better? Or does more get too convoluted?
Yeah, we had one, we find, we made the decision to cut it off at forty, and I will tell you why. In the beginning, and you learn from experience, we did not, and we let a group have, they had fifty-some odd people, it was just unruly, and nobody was getting a chance to talk and to really say what they wanted, and then it became very repetitious. If you choose people from different, you know, areas to be present there, we find forty people is really a good number, and it's very workable.
And it's very easy to get forty people? Considering we almost have thirteen people sitting right here.
Yes, yes. I think the biggest thing is to pick from different areas, you know you're going to want some parents, you know that you're going, you may honestly want somebody from Oradell and from River Edge there, I mean, you may want somebody from this school, since they lead into you. You're going to want somebody from either Rotary or, you know, Chamber of Commerce, or somebody from the police, we'll give you a list of suggestions, you know, for that, but I don't think you'll have any problem getting forty people, and I think that's good, it works well with the four groups, with the ten people, that's a good group to work with. You start having more than ten people sitting together, it becomes difficult.
So the day of, is it just you and?
Kathy.
Kathy, that come in?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so you don't bring any other people, so it's like in four groups?
No, we do the whole thing.
You can't split yourselves in two?
We do the whole thing ourselves.
Okay.
The two of us will be here the whole time.
Okay.
And the two of us will put the product together that you're seeing, and we will vote, one of us will come back, if not both of us, to present to the board, now, just the two of us.
Okay.
So you're, whether it's good or bad, you're stuck with us, yes.
Is there any, is there a good time of the year to do this, is any time of the year better than?
Okay. With any school that has a high school, you've got activities on the weekend, I'm well aware of that, and I know that's, the hardest part of this would honestly be deciding on what day you want to do this, that seems to be the hardest thing, and what will govern that is your, is your calendar, and you see what's good. We've done it all times of the year. We've had some districts do it in the morning, so they come there at eight-thirty, they do from nine to one, other districts like to do it in the afternoon, and either you'll have like breakfast food, it's a working breakfast, or it's a working lunch, I don't think the time of day matters, I don't think the time of year matters.
That's where I was.
I think it's better for you, based on your calendar, what you think is possible. And we're flexible, I mean, we don't have a preference, if we don't have another commitment that day, the only commitment we make is both of us will be here.
Right.
Because you need two people to facilitate this.
Anything else, any other questions?
Well, I try not to think, but.
No, I just, both of those reports, I believe were written in January, is that correct?
One we did in September.
September, I'm sorry, I was just, because I'm thinking back on the same thing.
We did Ridgewoods, I believe, in September, and we did Glen Rock's in January, the date is on the front of that.
That's why I was trying to remember the date.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember. One was, yeah.
So then, Kat, Nancy, the process then too, how long, obviously a four-hour meeting, what is the anticipated, like, turnaround time for a report that comes back? Is it, did I miss something there?
No, 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 I'm trying to think my, I would tell you that probably within two months, we could bring everything back. bring everything back to you, which I think is what we did with both. As I recall, I went back to Ridgewood in the beginning of November, and I believe I went back to Glen Rock in March, so I, it's about two months.
So I'm just trying to, to Pal's question, too, like, what time of the year is trying to anticipate, you know, working backwards of when you want to do, when you kind of, you know?
That, I think, I would commit, I would say by two months, we would be able to do it. Because if you look at the back of the report, all of those strategies, what happens is, we have our four, three or four goal statements. I'll, I'll tell you in advance what we do. We give every person there four little post-its. And we say to them, okay, now you write what strategy you want for which one of the four goal statements. There may be one on technology, and maybe someone's interested in technologies, they want all four post-its to go to technology. Maybe they want one to go to technology, another one to go to student achievement. You have, we take, but picture, forty people with four of the stickies, one hundred and sixty of those statements. We write everyone up, we group them together, so, and this is what takes us the time, so that your administration does not have to do that. We do all of that for them. And that's the part in the back that lists all the strategies by goal area. So we put that in a workable format, so that then it makes it easier for the action plans. And also, we do, and we'll give you a template for the action plans to make it a little bit easier also. And we'll work with you at that point, if Patrick needs anything, we'll work with. But I would say two months, I think, is a fair amount of time for the turnover.
Okay.
So within that two-month period, is there any give and take with anybody, like, the policy committee, in formatting from the four-hour to the final product?
Yeah.
You just come up with a final product?
We take all of it and put that together for you.
Okay, so there's no give and take?
No. What happens is, you know, that, and we're famous for the, the big post-it notes that everybody uses. That's what we'll do. You saw those, the pictures that are in there, the visioning exercise? Every one of the groups will get one of those large post-its, and they will do their individual visioning exercise, and we'll put them around the room. When we come up with challenges or, um, for the district, we'll do the same thing, we'll put the large post-its up. And we will take all of that information, and then we compile it for you. So that your business administrator does not have to write anything, you don't have to take any notes. We will do that for you. We do that. In fact, you see the pictures that are there? We take the pictures of all of it. So you don't have to do, once you get there, you can have coffee, and you do not have to do anything else. We will put all of it together.
So we don't even need to count him, then?
I'm not going to know that.
That counted, you.
No, we need, we need your time.
This, this process, like, as Stephanie mentioned, you may not get complete consensus, but basically, what this is, is a four-hour process of basically helping define the vision, and you guys are compiling all this. It could, I'm not saying that it wouldn't, but you can come back and say, this is what everybody came up with and all too, and then this board, or the next board, or whatever it is, could conceivably say, this is great, this is, we're doing a lot of this stuff, but you know what? This is just going to be a document we go back to refer to. It's not a live and, live and be-all type of document, correct?
It is, if you make the commitment.
If you make the commitment, exactly.
And I will be very honest with you, whether you do our process, New Jersey School Board, someone else's, until you are ready to accept that whatever document comes out, you will use as a working document going forward, you shouldn't commit to this. Because very honestly, you need that buy-in from the board. If the board doesn't buy into the process, then you can't really ask your community to buy into the process. So it really need, and, and I want to tell you that I give a lot of credit to boards of education that are willing to go out to their stakeholders and say, we want you to help us. We don't want to do this by ourselves. Because you could do it by yourselves, but you don't want to. You want to hear what they have to say. You want to engage them. So very honestly, you deserve the credit for opening it up to them. But you have to be comfortable with that process. And that's why at every step, when we first do the visioning exercise, we will say, does everybody agree with this? You know, we, we go, we keep, because every step is built on the next step. You have to build a foundation before you can get to the mission statement, and then before you can get to your goal areas. Sometimes goal areas are hard. People, you know, you can argue, um, how many goals do you want? Do you want three, do you want four? It's a give and take. You're just not, I can tell you this, you're not going to end up with ten, because it's not manageable. It's not manageable for a district, and it's not manageable for your superintendent to do that. So, you know, we try to facilitate the process so that it's workable and it is a document. I don't want to see the document sitting on anybody's desk and not being used. It doesn't serve a purpose. I will tell you that we do goal setting with Glen Rock. We put in the packet, when we do their goal setting, the goals that they've determined from their community planning. Because very honestly, one should feed it to the other.
Right.
There is no purpose in you determining a three-year plan, a five-year plan, whatever you decide, and then not use it when you're doing your annual goal setting. Why do you invent the wheel? You've already done the hard work. It should flow directly from that. You may honestly be able to use your, um, your action plans to come up with some of your goals. They should mesh. That's the whole purpose of this. So I think the buy-in has to be there on both sides to be able to do it. Yes.
So to kind of follow up on that, so do you know, I don't, I don't, what kind of follow-up you do after you give a document? Do you know if, um, any, um, changes have been made in their budgetary process based on this data, now that they're forming their budget for the next school year?
I know that they're used, what, let me just turn it around just a little bit to answer your question. I know that they're using that product in determining their budget. So I know what they've done, is they've done their action plans, they know what their key things are. Some of them, you have to appreciate, when they do the action plans, the answer the board may decide, one of these things is not feasible. Let's just pick something.
I mean, they both have full day kindergarten.
That's sitting there, that's a big, that's a big change and a big chunk of money.
Absolutely. But what I'm saying is, maybe they decided that, um, they, I don't know, they were going to do a whole new math curriculum. And it just became so expensive that when they finally got the fin, the numbers, the board made the decision that they just don't want to implement it. That's okay. What we explained to the stakeholders that day is, everything you talk about, every one of those stickies, will be discussed by the administration. Not that everyone will be implementing. And there's a big difference. That's where the board and your administration come into play. Because very honestly, just because I think you should do something, doesn't mean it's feasible. Doesn't mean that's the direction the board wants to go in. All we say is that everything we discuss this day will be given to the board and will be discussed by the board. It does not mean that it will be implemented by the board. That's your call. And that's where the buy-in has to come in, you look it over, maybe we could, maybe you could do something over two years, or over three years, but you can't implement the goal over one year. There isn't the money for it. Maybe on the other hand, something can be. That's really where all of you come into the decision-making, because that's your responsibility. Did that kind of answer your question?
Yeah, it was a little contradictory to what you said to Joe, because basically, you're talking about you buy into the thing, but then you're saying, but you can't ignore it.
No, what I'm saying is, you buy into, no.
I mean, once we discuss it, if we say, we don't realize.
No, you buy into the process.
Yes, yes.
The process you buy into, which is to let your community, as well as the board, make a decision together as to what is possible. The decision as to what to implement is, takes into consideration resources, both financial and manpower. And those are things that I, as a community member, would not know. It's things that you would know, and that's where it gets turned over to you. That's a true thing, that, that's the same thing, though, whether it's a six-month strategic planning process, or whether it's a community, I, I'm sorry, a six-month strategic plan, or a community planning. That aspect doesn't change. It's still up to the Board of Education with the administration to make a decision as to whether or not this is a feasible thing to implement. That doesn't change. It's still up to you. And all is said and done, that, that, that issue rests with the board. And it should. I don't think it's contradictory, maybe I said it in such a way, but I, I think they're
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, I've, just so that, yeah, everyone realizes that I've been through this process with, uh, Kathy and Nancy in another location, another school district, so I'm familiar with what they're talking about and, or what Nancy's talking about tonight. And, uh, she will keep you four hours, you'll be out the door, and you will get a product very shortly thereafter. I think two months was right about when we got it, the last time that I was involved with you. The other thing is, I want to thank Nancy for, um, her stick-to-itiveness, shall we say. This was originally scheduled for our first meeting, uh, which got snowed out, and, uh, being resourceful as she is, she checked the website, because I forgot to. I apologize, it's true, that we had canceled the board meeting. And then we were going to do it again at our last board meeting, which, as you know, was also the night of a storm. And I was fortuitous enough to think about it and call her and talk to her, and we decided to postpone it for tonight. So I do appreciate, third time was the charm, kiddo.
Monday nights have not been good.
No.
No, for school districts this year, that's for sure.
So thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Can I just ask whoever has the Glen Rock one, that I could get that?
Thank you. Sorry. Thank you very much. And thank you again for having, uh, me come in and speak to, and whatever you decide to do, I wish you all the best along with it.
Thank you.
Thank you. See if we can, can we? So guys, it brings us to the student member report. So you're on.
I'll start us off. As the winter sports are coming to a conclusion, the spring sports are kicking ahead, and the nurse's offering for anyone that's first sport this season is spring. Uh, physicals, March second, two-thirty, and then nurses' room. And then, the senior social is March fifth at the Chelsea Piers in, on the Hudson River. So that's all available to all seniors.
The park testing's going to be held March fourth, fifth, and sixth, and I know a lot of us seniors, we have, like, an abbreviated schedule. Um, boys and girls track and field has had a lot of success. They won, um, they both won sectionals, the boys won groups, and several individual athletes placed at, um, the state meet of champions. And also, two seniors, June Seaw and Charlie Lee, they took first place at an Utepan varsity classic debate tournament a few weeks back.
Um, recently, Riverdale won the Fields of Excellence Award for our athletic fields. Um, the French students went on a trip to France and returned this past Friday. And the Peru trip is already having a meeting for the trip next year for Spanish students. And the Triumph Honor Society gave music grams for Valentine's Day, and the Art Honor Society gave Valentine's grams.
And that concludes the student portion of this meeting.
And the president's support, because you guys just, you know, nailed everything.
Good try.
No, that's good. No, um. Uh, well, I did have the fashion show, but yeah, that.
I'm giving you something to add to your.
Well, no, actually, I would, I would actually add a couple of little, little, um, I guess a little more detail, some of the things the students mentioned, is, the one, the Field of Excellence, um, Fred Smith and Bruce, I can't pronounce his last name.
Labessure.
Labessure. It's the sixth consecutive year that they've won this award, Riverdale, and it's, it's, Tom pointed out, there's only two schools in New Jersey, um, that have actually won this award this past year in Ute. So that's, it's a, it's a very big honor. You just said about the French club, is, I wanted to thank, I guess publicly, Ms. Brumal for, uh, sharing with Tom the, uh, the diary and the pictures and all too, that, you know, we got a little bit of that, which was nice to be able to see, you know, as a, um, thing. And also, wanted to, uh, as Patrick mentioned, all twos, is thank everybody for their patience and all too with the weather and the rescheduling, um, of, of meetings, of half-days, of possible half-days and all too. So I, you know, appreciate everybody's patience with that. Um, and then again, for board members, I know we kind of mentioned before, but the Bergen County School Board meeting is March twenty-fourth in, uh, New Milford High School. So I'm sure you guys probably all got that email as well, just a reminder. Um, and, as you said, guys, the winter sports are ending and all too, which just means spring is on the way, which also means the spring musical is going to be soon, which is always a highlight of the year, so. Don't know when the dates are, I can't, I don't recall, but, and now Stephanie, too, what was the, the, the fashion?
The fashion show was on February tenth, which was a, a, a busy night all around town. Um, yes.
I was away, so.
And, um, but it was in the, in the town news. So you could see a little write-up, and they had great pictures of the kids, and, um, the marching band's been doing it for probably like six years or more. It used to be a PCL function, and they've done a really good job, they have a big tricky tray, you know, and the parents and students worked really hard, um, for, and they've combined with the fashion club, um, for, to do the fashion show, uh, since that started maybe two or three years ago, so.
Yep. So thank you. Uh, and that concludes my report. Mr., Mr. Superintendent, sir?
I have a couple of, uh, announcements. Most of them are, well, all of them are happy news, if we shall, if I could say. Uh, so bear with me to, uh, go through a couple of these things. Proud to indicate that, or announced that Jasmine Kang, who was an eighth grader, had her art, uh, selected to become part of the two thousand fifteen Youth Art Month exhibit in Trenton. It will be displayed beginning in the twenty-eighth of February and run through March sixth. And, uh, congratulations to Jasmine and Melissa Miller, who's the teacher that was involved in the program. Continuing in the eighth grade, uh, Lexia Bayeia and Iris Kim won first place in the statewide video conference, which was run by the Foreign Language Educators of New Jersey Organization. So congratulations to them on their submission, and they, uh, did that under the direction of Marta Mayer, who is a middle school world language teacher. Uh, moving to music and our choral program, uh, I'm happy to announce that, uh, we had Kara Kasoth, who was selected, uh, to the junior regional band for clarinet, and that Carol, uh, Muie for the flute, and Ethan Shun for the alto saxophone were selected to that. We also had Carolyn Forte, Amanda Dela Cruz, So Young Sophia Park, Chloe Vasse, and Caroline Muie, who were selected to the junior choral program as well. So all of these students have to audition for the program and then get selected into it. It's a good honor and a great, they will perform, I think, in the spring, I think the program is at Clifton High School. So Michael O'Reilly and Kathy Zentel are the staff members in charge of that program. Then, moving on to something that we're kind of proud of here, it's something that, uh, you wouldn't necessarily think is, is, uh, something that gets a lot of, um, uh, use, but we, we have a pretty active driver ed program up here, and, uh, we had students, uh, our program participated in the high school traffic safety challenge, and I am happy to report that Riverdale came in second place overall in that, uh, program, uh, which is run on a statewide basis across the.
Was it the sign-up, sign-up, sign-up?
Yeah, it's really the seatbelt program, is to use, is to use your seatbelt, so I don't know if, if any of you noticed, we have sometimes, especially in the morning, you'd see the, uh, students who are standing out there, and they, they're checking you when you drive in, to see if you're wearing your seatbelt. And yes, they even check the superintendent when he comes in, because they'll, they'll stop and, uh, ask me for money. No, they'll stop and, and check me out as well. And that's Kevin Lorm and Diane Fussauer in charge of that. Then, um, very pleased to resort that our academic decathlon team, uh, performed very well, and overall, uh, received, we had, uh, Kenneth McCa, I'm going to say it wrong, we had Kenneth McCa, I'm going to say it wrong, Macagdag?
Macadag.
Macadag, won the gold in the essay in economics, right. Silver in math and art and social studies and honorable mention in spath, in spa, in speech.
Maybe he could have come and heard it.
In speech. Overall, he won the golden, the gold plaque for the highest scoring varsity decathlete in our region. And that's the first time a Riverdale student ever get to that point, which is fantastic. Rachel Okrasinski won a bronze in essay and honorable mention in the interview. Solona Sexena?
Sexena.
Sexena, okay. Silver in music. Michael Goriyev, honorable mention in social studies, art, economics, interview and speech. Edward Grimsland, bronze in social, in social science. And Arcady Redman in gold in social science and bronze in science. So congratulations to them. That's quite an accomplishment, the team, and that's under the direction of Jeff Williams and Donald Seok. Did you, when you mentioned the, I stepped out for a second. Our track coach, Mike Urso?
I'm going to.
No, you didn't. Okay, so I'm not stealing anybody's thunder. I'd like to congratulate Mike Urso, who was selected for induction into the New Jersey Scholastic Coaches Association International Hall of Fame. Coach Urso, I think, was also selected as coach of the year for indoor track. And you mentioned that the boys team was successful at the day. So congratulations to Mike Urso on that matter. And finally, just make the announcement, if you read through the minutes, you may wonder how, that we now, Doug and Barbara are now married. Doug Kuchar is on the board. So I apologize to Doug for having the wrong name down there. We'll correct it. It's better than you swearing in.
You know what? Maybe that's how you got, you know.
So we will correct that.
He's already, he's already giving you.
The business there, Tom.
If you could note that, that change on your minutes, and we'll change it when we put it officially into the book. Thank you. That concludes my report. Elegantly delivered, what did you say?
I just liked that on a loop.
Are you their speech coach?
No, no, not at all.
This is the before. There the after. Okay, with that, sorry. Can I have a motion on the consent agenda items?
Second.
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 Stephanie, any discussion on the consent agenda? Okay, Tom, roll call please. Claudia?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
And Joe? Yes. Roman numeral 11 for the superintendent, at the request of the board secretary, recommends that the board accept the line item transfers and the adjustments as listed in the financial report for the month ending January 2015. Have a motion?
So moved.
Alan? Second?
Second.
Any questions? Tom, roll call on Roman numeral 11 for Claudia?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
And Joe? Yes. Have a motion on Roman numeral 11, nine, as stated.
Make motion.
Claudia, have a second?
Second.
Al? Tom, would you like to give a little bit of explanation here because it is so long, very even?
Let's go back about three years ago when we talked about upgrading the electrical service in the middle school. And we mentioned that it would be done on three phases. It would be the circuit breaker boxes of those consisting of the two of the phases. And the last little rooftop units, what we call the exhausts. So we finished the first two phases over the past two summers. And this is the last part of the electrical upgrade for the middle school. So what do the rooftop units do? They circulate the air better and perform better function. Okay? And it was done here at the high school when the referendum was done. And this will be the last part of it. The interesting thing is, when we went out to bid for this last year, the same service was approximately $230,000. But because we went to bid on this early, it's $150,000. I'm sorry.
No, that was going to be my question, why such a big discrepancy because of when we put out for the bid?
Yes. So we went out very early. And we were first in line, as they say, for summer work.
Okay. And it's going to be all done this summer?
Yes.
And then we're done?
Correct, with the electrical upgrade.
Right.
Yes.
It's like the bathroom. I feel like, is there like something else coming down the back?
There'll still be a bathroom.
There's always a bathroom. There's always a bathroom. There's always a bathroom.
I'd love to say no, but maybe I missed one someplace.
I know you did.
Never say no.
Okay.
Anything else? Tom, roll call then on Roman numeral 11, nine. Claudia?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
And Joe? Yes. Have a motion on Roman numeral 11, 10. The superintendent and the board secretary recommend that the board approve the memorandum of agreement between the Riverdale Education Association and the Riverdale Regional Board of Education for the period July 1, 2013 to June 30, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Alan? Claudia? Any discussion? Great. Tom, roll call then on Roman numeral 11, 10. Claudia?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
You know, a lot of work went into it on both sides and a long time. And I'm certainly appreciative of all of that work. And I'm not sure I agree with everything in it, but I'm going to vote yes based on the effort that all parties put in.
Alan?
Yes.
And Joe? Yes. Which brings us to the infamous old business, new business.
Joe, I wonder if I hear my rule this is look above committee reports. And it's a timely part of the year regarding the finance and budget. And if I can at this time, just give a short summary of what we discussed, or is it the wrong part?
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Actually, Tony, before we have the old business is in executive, because usually you write that down too with me, is we're bringing forward some items to the regular agenda for this evening.
Yep.
So.
One is a maternity leave for Maria Cleva. One is the resignation of building services employee Doug Habenstree. Then the appointment of Evelio Guzman, a salary of 33, 750 for building services and as well as his appointment to the swing shift that takes place from November 1st to April 1st. And then one, excuse me, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine volunteer coaches for spring sports in baseball, boys tennis, girls across track, and softball.
So they have a motion to bring forward those items, magic from executive to the regular meeting?
I'll make motion.
Claudia? Second?
Second.
Doug?
Doug.
There's Doug Cooper, Cooper, right now.
Just Doug.
I'm sorry.
Just Doug.
Just Doug.
He's like Madonna.
Any discussion? I'm sorry, kidding. Tom, roll call on the items that was brought forward. Claudia?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
And Joe? Yes.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. And now, Tony, to go back, as yet, usually we have our, our committee reports prior, but because of the fact that that, if you want, I think it's a quick little update.
Again, because it's a timely part of the year and the focus is on that. We've had two meetings. The first one was on February 9th. I and Al were in attendance along with Patrick and Tom. And it was a lengthy meeting. Some of the items discussed the overall budget makeup. And to most of the veteran board members, this is really known from previous years. But to anyone else listening, the process actually begins in the fall with staff. We focused on proposed staffing areas, capital projects, which we discussed a few minutes ago. Remembering that the whole budget preparation proposal is really a work in progress and it's being fine tuned. We discussed the following, but not limited to, the budget at fund balance, proposed tax levy, miscellaneous revenue, projected state aid, projected extraordinary aid, review and analysis of the middle school, high school, transportation, board of administrative accounts, et cetera, debt service, and capital outlay. We again, met on February 18th with Al, myself, Patrick, and Tom. We reviewed additional adjustments to the budget with regard to cuts, looked at upcoming dates. For instance, tomorrow there'll be a, by the governor on the state budget, I'm sure. Soon after, our numbers will be, state aid will be released. And those are really raw numbers. And as administration will explain when a budget presentation is given, that when you peel back, there are a lot of background numbers that will surface. But we really get the raw number and that will be in newspapers as well. Also forthcoming, well, the percent shares of the two towns, Oradon, River Edge. We're looking at a preliminary budget coming up next month and a final budget month coming up into the spring. That's it. Again, there's a lot going on. I just wanted to share that.
Just so everybody's aware, the governor's going to make his address tomorrow. And within two days of that, the state aid figures will be known to all school districts. And with the, on those two days, what we call the percent shares will be known. Doug and I have met again between your meeting. And we've chipped away a little bit more. So the compilation of the entire budget will be pretty much taken care of within the next week. We're going, if we look at this backwards, we're planning on having the preliminary vote on the budget March 9th at our planned board meeting. If we work backwards from there, we, the finance committee, Patrick, we're going to need either the second, third, or fourth as soon as we get this thing finalized. And then send it home to the entire budget probably around the fourth or fifth.
Send it home to the entire board, you mean?
Yes. I'm sorry.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. And of course, there'll be a memo detailing the particulars and then all the detail that goes with it.
And then you're going to do your dog and pony show?
Yes.
On the night? And then that's the night that we're going to vote?
Yes. It's really no different from what we've done before.
It's only the, it's only the submission.
Right, submission, right.
The final vote isn't.
Right, it's in April.
Right.
Four.
The time period between March 9th and the final vote is April 27th. It's, it's an extended period of time. And we have those six weeks to refinance the meeting. Okay?
Yeah, you know, in the, what, four, four and a half years that I've been on the board, we seem to be, if you're, even the finance committee, we seem to be getting less and less information. And it seems to be coming up right against the vote. I mean, I remember, I think it was maybe Joe's first year as president, in November, there was a presentation. In December, there was some knowledge. In January, there was something. And it seems to be getting less and less information. And here you are with the budget and you're going to vote preliminary in a couple of days. And I, I'm not really happy with the way that process is going. I mean, you're not going to know numbers, but I know you start in, in the fall looking. And I think that sharing some information and, and, you know, would, would be helpful to know the direction that it's going in before it's just popped in your lap.
I don't know how to, how to address that other than.
You don't have to address that. I'm just.
I'm not sure if I agree or disagree with that, but to filter out information in November, which could change based upon aid and things along those lines, I'm not sure it's worthwhile.
You've filtered out things like, this is what we anticipate. You filtered out, this is what we're thinking about, you know, staffing wise, these are the kind of things we'd like to be able to put in the budget. These are the kind of projects that, you know.
If money allows, this is what we could do. Yeah. To be honest with you, I mean, I've sat on budget and finance. So for the years I sat on budget and finance, when you kind of like get into the minutia of the entire like big huge packet, and you sit there with it for like a couple of months, you're pretty well seasoned. But for somebody that's not on that committee, to be just handed a budget and then four days later to say, let's vote for it, is definitely like a little challenging. Yes, you know, we all know about like the 2% cap and not having to vote on it. But it's still our budget. It's still something we approve as the sport of education. And it would just be nice if we had it to like, not get into every fine, like little detail, because that's really what the committee system is about. But to have a better knowledge and a better understanding of it.
Okay.
Well, isn't that where the finance committee would kind of steer the rest of the board?
Right.
Where we, you know, and I'm new to it. So, you know, I'm trust you, I'm not coming up with the answer. But, you know, Anthony or Tony's been on, on it and Alan's been on it and I'm new. But we would hear a little bit more of the detail.
Right, absolutely.
Just like the negotiating committee came to us with a, you know, free signatures on the document. So we're kind of like, it's a big head start for the rest of us as well.
I think that's a little different negotiations than what a budget is. I, I do. But it's not different because there was, along the way, there was conversations that were had. Right. Well, that's what I was going to say. What I think is different is that's more something that we're giving to you guys. We're giving information out in executive. You guys just met when? A week ago?
Yeah, the 9th and the 18th.
The 9th and the 18th of February. Budget has to be in March. I mean, I, we've done better jobs in the past. We have.
Well, I'm not sure it's a bad job. What I'm saying to you, if you're, what you're trying to say is that you would like more information. It's a little different story than not doing a good job.
Right. Well, I, well, if that's how you want to put it, okay, fine. I think it's, I just don't think we're doing a good job. I know Stephanie had requested information. I don't even know if she ever got it about sports.
You weren't here that meeting.
I wasn't. I didn't request information. I proposed an idea. Proposed. Right. To give more knowledge. But that didn't have to come for this question.
I brought, I brought that up and I think that was addressed. And also the bleachers. That was already done, right?
Yes.
They were too wide.
I know, right?
No, I brought it up at the committee.
Like, wow.
Those are the first two items of my long windy demeanor. And I brought them up and they were already addressed. So they were done.
Well, I had a nice little back and forth exchange with Pat because it was like two days later that I went to a wrestling match. And everybody who came into the bleachers, I was maybe there, like, you know, maybe 30 people were there. They're like, look at the bleachers were done, bleachers were done, you know, blah, blah. And so, so I said, you know, he was a wonder can. And.
You get everything done like this.
No, Pat, I didn't.
If you wanted self-defense, we got self-defense. If you wanted the bleachers fixed, we got the bleachers fixed.
Oh, I have a long list. It's going nowhere. So.
But I, I might.
He likes to throw me a bone.
It was a time that I've been here. Whenever I've had a question, you know, for Patrick or Tom, they just have to go and they'll have the answer to you right away. Because when Stephanie brought up the bleachers and the athletic department expenditures, Tom, we were at the meeting and Tom just went into his folder and pulled out the sheet that I think would have satisfied your question. Whether or not you got it or not, you know, Tom could answer that. But, you know, we get bullet points. And then there are usually big folders off to the side in our budget meeting. You know, the minutia, if you would, is always, is covered. So, kudos.
Oh, no, they do a fabulous job in the meeting. I just, I guess I like to see Tom work for his money and do a dog and pony show every so often for us.
Is there any other old business, new business? Claudia?
I just wanted to say the middle school had a parent orientation for the incoming seventh graders. And I just wanted to give a shout out to the administration and the guidance department. They did a fabulous job, got a lot of good feedback. I being one of those parents had him going through it all over again. Aren't you lucky, Patrick?
As is your son.
Yes. For the long seven years here. But they did a great job. So.
I was happy that the website wasn't working, so we didn't have to.
Yeah, yeah. That was actually like a plus. But they were good. They said things would be up the next day and it was. And it actually created people to go and look because they were going to go. Because they were gonna go through the website, and it wasn't working that night. But people went on the next day, and it was all the chatter. Everybody can't wait to get to Riverdale.
That's good.
I was reading an article in the Wall Street Journal last week about all the cities all around the country that are so far over budget because of the snowstorms and this excess salt and all. I was just wondering, Tom, how are we looking?
Let's put it this way, if we have any more snow, the heat will not be on in the next board meeting. Okay? So, but until then, we're in pretty good shape.
Claudia?
Hey, since you were talking about the snow, it kind of brought something to my attention. The Winnie exit, the back, for the back parking lot. I guess I've never noticed before, but Winnie Ave, you know, like Winnie Ave, when you go out the back parking lot. Like, where is the back parking lot here? Where are we? Out back here? Yeah, the senior lot. I call it the back parking lot. Where we park our cars when we come here for a meeting. Win, we call it Winnie in our house. It's win, whatever you people wanna call it.
It's fifth, you mean, fifth avenue?
No, not fifth, no. When you go down, like, if you're going up towards my house.
When you exit onto pile.
Yes, yeah, okay, so that one. Winnie, that's what we call it. We call it Winnie. I used to walk, I used to walk branded, and we called it Winnie here. So, I noticed, now that it's, there's tons of snow on the ground, I noticed more kids walking down the actual ramp where the cars are supposed to go, like where the lanes traffic. Would we ever consider, because, you know, I'm always looking for things to do, would we ever consider putting like a walkway? Just to make it safer for the kids, because I almost saw a kid get like. I almost saw a kid get wiped out the other morning, that's why I asked. And I know it's like a very dangerous like intersection and everything, and then the kids are coming up. But somebody was not paying attention, and it was one of the rare days that the sun was out, and a person was coming down, and it almost clipped the kid. And I just was thinking it might be worth it for us to consider putting a, a path on win, whatever you people call it.
No, you, you don't wanna put it on, you wanna put it on our property.
On our property, yes, on our property, but I'm saying like leaning down, right, leaning down to pile.
I think there is like a walkway from the high school to, like, that's not a lot. It's just off, it's like.
It's a horizontal one. It goes where the rock is.
Yes.
Mm-hmm. From those exterior doors to Pile Street, not necessarily down, but across.
Oh, it goes, it goes across, like, so you could get down with a walkway?
I was just gonna say, it's not plowed, though. No, that's, well, that's what I'm saying.
Just plow that, and we have a solution.
Right.
Then we'll be over, bud.
Matt, Matt and Bob and Carrie will take care of that in the morning. Extra credit, okay?
Start digging.
I think it is, you're right, but.
Actually, I will echo though what Ms. O'Neill was saying, because when there is snow, it does get very narrow. And you do see the kids kind of like going down like in like a line, and the cars are also in a line. It is very narrow, especially when you have cars coming in the other way.
Yeah.
So, I think that might be a good thing.
I just, I don't wanna have to get in my car and help save somebody early in the morning. I, I'm sorry, don't.
It's too cold.
It's cold. Sorry. That's all I have in my notebook.
Anything else, guys? Public comments on anything else? That includes people behind the cameras?
Up at the building.
All right, now this is left at the building. Motion for adjournment?
Some of.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.